I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the school committee meeting for April today, sorry. And we'll start by, I'm gonna seek a motion to approve the bills.
So move, Mr. Chairman?
I'll second.
Motion being made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the bills? If there's none, all those in favor, thank you. We have a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting last meeting, March 25th. Thank you, seconded. Thank you. Motion being made and seconded. Any discussion on the minutes of March 25th? If there are being none, all those in favor, if there are being any others. Charles.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This past Thursday, April 4th, CHS held its annual reality fair in the gymnasium. All day long, students at cross-grade levels and classes had the opportunity to simulate life after college as they spent the simulated salaries of their dream jobs while budgeting to maintain a living. The whole event was an enormous success, and all of CHS would like to extend its gratitude to Mrs. Welch for offering her time to direct it, and her business students for volunteering to keep the day running smoothly. Also, a big thanks to Avidia Bank for sponsoring the reality fair, and all of the community groups and banks that brought in knowledgeable and experienced volunteers that helped to advise students through their many important financial decisions. A big congratulations to the CHS band, which was recognized by the Massachusetts Trial Court for its student band director, Kate Meifert, for their commitment to the program and cultural appreciation. The band was represented as mass probation training academy by instrumentalists sophomore Amber Ramos and freshman Cody Cavaco. Thursday, April 4th, through Saturday, April 6th, brought High School Musical to the stage as the CHS Drama Club enlisted their months of practice in performing for the entire community. The entire group of cast, crew, directors, and of course, the live band worked tirelessly to make the show a brilliant success and a fun time for all involved. By the final night, many laughs, cheers, hugs, and tears were shared as CHS said goodbye to this year's senior thespians. Congratulations to directors Mrs. Meifert and Ms. Gent for bringing their collection of talented students together to sing, dance, soar, and fly on the stage. Two weekends ago, the CHS first robotics team competed at the Shrewsbury Regional Competition. Being one of the loudest teams in the stands, Galeforce and plenty of community supporters cheered on their team as the robot made it to the quarterfinals. Fitted against the number-one seed alliance, Team 126 held their own and was even able to beat them before getting knocked out. The whole team stayed to watch the rest of the teams and the award ceremony, at which point Clinton was honored with the judges' award, recognizing an exceptional team that the judges could not fit into any other award category. Congratulations to the whole team for their hard work, and good luck from all of us here in Clinton as Galeforce takes flight to Detroit for the world championship competition from April 24th through the 28th. The annual senior citizen dance will take place tomorrow, Tuesday, April 9th, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. The dance will be run by junior members of the Step Up to Excellence program and brings all ages of the Clinton community together. Relay for Life is starting up again for the first time in two years, and the first meeting for all CHS interested in joining the team are asked to meet 2:15 this Thursday, April 11th, in the high school cafeteria. Those students and teachers that will be traveling on the once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to Spain this April vacation will be leaving for the airport at 1:00 p.m. this Friday, April 12th. We wish them safe travel as they make their way across the globe to make memories someone forget. Thank you.
Charles, do you have a date yet for Relay for Life?
I do. It's on my phone, and I think because we, they are looking for, it's the 18th? It's the 18th of April, sorry. April 18th. Of course, that's May 18th. May 18th, sorry, so that's May 18th. And they are looking for chaperones, if anyone's interested, community volunteers, or students that have parents. Parents are always welcome as volunteers for any length of time that they would like to provide. Of course, it goes from 6:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m., so that those nights, those wee hours late into the morning and everywhere in between are always tiresome, so everyone is welcome to join.
And that'll be out on the memorial complex, I'm assuming?
Uh, it won't be here. It's, I don't know where it is specifically. It's in a different town, but it won't be here. A bunch of schools will be coming together somewhere else.
We're not hosting it, participating.
Okay, I understand. Thank you for the clarification.
Absolutely.
Anything from the PTA? Anything from special needs pack? Anything from the CTA? Thank you. Any additional public comments?
I just want to let you know that last Monday night, the middle school band traveled to Mechanics Hall and heard the army band and Philsor Soldiers Chorus. We got to sit in my favorite spot in the hall, which is right in balcony overlooking the stage, and the musicians were so impressed. We were one of very few children in the audience. They were so impressed that they came up at intermission. They brought mini drumsticks with a loop on it for a keychain. And then the, one of percussionists asked how many percussion students I had. He said, "Wait right here." It was like I wasn't going anywhere. And he came back with a pair of drumsticks for every one of our percussionists at the middle school. So, the kids were super excited just to see how a professional band, they said. Miss Quest, they all got up at like the exact same time, and they all turned the same way. And they had comments about the music, and they're still talking about it. So it was a great night.
Thank you for providing them with that formative experience.
You're welcome.
Dr. Meyer.
Alright, so the first topic I have is just to build off the facilities. I've already talked a little bit about how that's gonna work. So Russ, if you wanna come on up. In your packet, you should have a capital schedule insert.
Mr. Kraus, that, the real, so.
So I don't know if you wanna, Russ, you wanna highlight the FY '20 priorities or capital cuts?
Dr. Meyer, it's nice that we're the finance committee last Thursday or Friday, and we revised capital priorities based on what they said would be available to share. And the first two things, there's only two school items on the list at this time. And that would be the middle school roof and a generator for middle school. I'm confident of the roof, and everything else on my list, I'm not confident of, people clap and I'm not. And just to let you know what ended up on the list was the roof, diesel generator at the middle school, a flooding issue in the town hall.
When you say this year, do you mean 19 or it's coming here?
Going into the 19, 20.
So FY '20, so on your five-year schedule, when you say 2019, you mean?
Yeah, 19, 20, 20.
19, 20.
2019, 2020, yeah. So, so just so you know what we have, we ended up calling the list, we had a huge list for the town and school. And so we ended up with the roof of the middle school, generator, it's a flooding problem in the town hall, some mace marine care, even the library, and then some police and fire station upgrades and camera upgrades down there. So we're hoping that with a culled list, we'll get all of it, but there's no guarantee. But I'm confident the roof will be dealt with.
I think when we met with, when we had a preliminary meeting to discuss some of these items, I think it was recognized that, although the roof has a big price tag, and if you don't start there, you're just wasting your money on the inside, so.
So the ones that are listed in the 19, is that just sort of that?
The ones that are listed with the identified needs.
Right, yeah, identified needs, correct.
But the only ones that are probably gonna, so the total was 964,000.
970,000 of that 700,000.
So we don't, so this is still his, this was his identification of needs. So like in a perfect world, all these, this is what would be done in, you know, in FY '20, what's labeled 2019 there. There's $964,000 worth of stuff. What it probably looks like is, we're probably gonna be able to do, you know, 740,000 of that, which is the roof and hopefully the generator.
So we're pushing for those two items for middle school.
And that's based on some preliminary feedback from what the finance committee, I think, thinks is available for that, for those capital. The total of the capital.
Is this an additional generator, I think?
No, the generator's in the school now. It's original to the building. It doesn't function for the load and there's none of those issues with it. It's not an automatic switch over, so anything we do over there with the generator will be reused in any work we do.
So we were talking about the generator would be able to be, kind of, if it was a remodel or a new building or anything, or we needed to move it to a different building, cause something failed, we'd be able to do that, so.
Right, and the whole process, you know, from day one on the job, they've been talking, or we've been talking about that as a shelter. And if that's the true shelter, we need to have that pack of generator power, and it's gotta be automatic. Right now, someone else is gonna throw switches if power goes out.
No, there's 19, before we were here, I seem to remember at a town meeting, probably four years ago, I thought, four, five years ago, I thought there was a 100-foot purchase of generator for the, for one of the schools.
I think we had it as a budget item that ended up getting caught.
Oh, that's right, yeah, that's why I was asking.
I don't think it was a warrant, it was actually in the budget.
Right, right.
I think the DMH should have been working on it.
Remind me when you said that about it being a shelter, and that was the reason they were budgeting the generator. So I didn't know if they had already.
I think last year we had mentioned it too, in the, in one of the warrant articles.
Yeah, but the recent power outage, and you saw the poor performance of that generator over there, and it's a need.
True it is.
No, I just, I just remembered, thought I remembered.
So, and in addition to, you know, the capital warrant items, there's gonna be a small fund of capital money that's gonna be given to the facilities department. It'll be able to take care of some of the little unapproved, maybe able to deal with stuff that we can't pick up. I know we need to car, see our bicycle in the office because of the issue we had last summer, and a couple of other things, so we'll be able to get a lot done.
So then.
Sorry, go ahead.
So the next, I don't know if there are any other questions on the warrant items, but the next, the next topic we had for Russ was Ash Street update. I know.
So the rest of these years, I know, I know you can't get into the finance committee or anybody in this town to give you a set number, but did they, they receptive at least to that one? Or no?
They're receptive to the fact that it's being quantified, and if they have a number to look at, and at any capital plan, it's a living document, and I'm always reviewing it and tightening up the numbers, and maybe moving stuff around year to year. The idea is to get to a balanced number every year, so we can actually have a real capital program going.
So how would the warrant article or the budget, when it's on the town, for the town meeting, will it be a total capital improvement, in other words, are our, you know, 700,000 be rolled up into a, into a total? Because my, I guess my concern with that being, we've got a priority, or the school's got a priority, but if it comes into a total amount, you know, like, let's say the town, whatever, the finance committee says, hey, you got a million and a half. Then who prioritize, you prioritize, I guess, that, of that million and a half, where's it go? Like, I get, we need a roof, but so maybe the senior center needs something, or that, you know, how does that shake out? I guess there's gonna be separate warrant articles by department, or is it gonna be one under, under your?
Well, you know, you as a board will have, you know, something put in that, and I work with Dr. Meyer closely on it, same with Mike Ward. And I report to them, and they'll help me get that direction.
Yeah, I think, I think the vision was to kind of make it maybe one warrant article that was basically from the facilities department. But then within that, just like when we write a warrant article, we have to have some description of what that covers. So in there, it might say, you know, if there's key items like the middle school roof, the middle school generator, the library foundation, the senior center, whatever, and, and then probably some sort of catch-all, like anything else that.
You think we're getting something?
Right, right, I know what you're saying.
Everybody thinks we're getting something.
Alright, so we'll get from that then, Ash Street. I know that, you know, Ash Street was a little, was a little confusion last year. I know we tried to pick up, we dug up an old memorandum of agreement that was all signed when we did, when the construction process was going on for the elementary school. I think there was some questions around how effective that really was at this point. I think, Russ, didn't you go to, I think you went to Parks and Rec meeting?
Yeah, we, we were trying to work with Parks and Rec last year and making that MOU work, and it's just too cumbersome. So we sort of grabbed it by the head and we said, we're gonna maintain, the school will maintain, mowing the grass and everything around the field. Little League is gonna maintain the fields proper. So they've already, they've already agreed for that. That is off our plates. So while they use in the fields, they'll maintain them.
The mowing of the grass?
Yeah, we're gonna take care of the fields 100%, both fields.
Are we gonna mow?
We're just gonna mow everything else. Anything they don't do, we're gonna mow.
What does that look like in the off-season? Cause I think, from what I understand, part of the extra work that had done was because nothing was done beyond the mowing. You know what I mean? If, if, if we're gonna end up being responsible for digging out the infield every year because in the fall, the grass has grown into that?
At this time, at this year, Little League is gonna take care of that. Little League is gonna maintain the field, gonna bring up the snuff.
See, they, they stop in June.
I know, when they stop, then we'll take over that, and then in July, on the budget, we've already been approved, more or less, the equipment we need to do turf maintenance, so that will be on-site in the July. And so that'll be a manpower savings. We're gonna have equipment to turf, to deal with the turf in the infield and all the other stuff we're talking about. Which we didn't want to have problems. We haven't had manpower.
I think as of, I mean, I think as of July, a lot of this is gonna become kind of a moot point because it's essentially whether it's the Parks and Rec, or it's the schools, or whatever, it's all gonna be basically within the facilities department. I do think just some of the concern is, not concern, but one of the things we just need to make sure that we are careful of and that we kind of execute properly would be, you know, as far as we can tell, that MOU was approved by selectmen. It was approved by everyone, and before we just say, this doesn't work for us anymore. We should probably try to figure out what does, and if we need to do, execute another, a new MOU, kind of, you know, addresses where we are now, that we can do that.
I think we definitely need to, we definitely need to make a new MOU. Cause that's great that the Little League's helping out, but I mean, it sounds like it's a year-to-year thing, you know? And so I, I wanna get, and I agree, it's a moot point with the new facilities department, but I know there is still some. So for all the tasks that Kraut does, they do, they will, he kind of has to bucket them, you know, chargebacks. So indirectly, you know, we just, cause I think our agreement is kind of just to treat that field like it's just a field. Like, we'll, we'll mow it and keep the grass at a reasonable level, but we're not doing anything specific to that as is a baseball field. If Little League or Parks and Rec want to maintain it for a baseball field, I mean, that's just the way that I understood it. I think that's kind of the way that the memorandum of agreement read, and if anything in that agreement is changing, I'm not like necessarily opposed to it, but we definitely have to.
Revisit it.
We have to have an agreement, yeah.
And then I think then it needs to be clear, like if it does say, cause the other thing is, you know, people turn over, right? So if, you know, there could be people in the Little League right now that are, that definitely wanna do it, and then their kids grow up and now it's a new board, or whatever it is, and then, you know, so we need to have, make sure we have something in writing that kind of references what the agreement is, I think. So, so I think, you know, it sounds like there's a plan for getting things ready for this year. They're gonna do what they're gonna do. But I think as we continue moving forward and establishing it as its own department of the town, we should look at making an MOU that addresses that. So maybe that might even be a, the next couple of months, I think.
Yeah, I got a couple of things on it, and kind of touched on what Ed said. I, I'm open, and I know we talked about this a year ago. I think the memorandum, what it was designed, was kind of Steve's saying, is it was to survive different personalities, and you know, and I think right now, well, they've already agreed, and then now that the Parks and Rec director, they're gonna have a new one. So he or she could come in and sound like that, and we're right back to where we were. But with, with, I know they had asked us a year ago, in fact, it was last October, they had, they said they would invite the school committee to one of the meetings, but they, at 3:00 in the afternoon, so none of us could be there. But to just choose to change the memorandum without any, at least, input from anybody on the board here, when we're, you know, we're the stakeholders in there, I'm not really thrilled with the idea. On the second, on the other part of that, I get, you know, hey, we're gonna cut the grass where the elementary school uses a, uses as a playground. But the remainder of it, you know, like you say, the Little League can come down, okay, and they can say, we got this field ready from the beginning of the year. But as the year goes on, that's the minor league, and I believe it's like coach pitch, where they just come down and play. Who's gonna dump, you know, there's the trash that's left behind, and it's great to say they're gonna do it, but I've seen this now go on for four years. And everybody.
Well, this is my point. I just don't want us to incur additional costs.
And that's what's gonna happen. They're gonna come down, because, you know, the kids are gonna go out to recess, and it's gonna be, your teachers are gonna have to clean that mess up because they want the kids to be able to play safely. And on the other side of that, even though they're gonna play down there, I, because it's not a town department, I don't want them to think that they now have some type of ownership in it, and go down and find that, I mean, they think that does great things down at Vale Street. They built a press box and so forth, but I don't want them to start constructing stuff down at Ash Street. Well, you know, and then say, well, you know, we thought we had this, you know, that's our field now. And because like Steve said it, when, when certain members of the Little League, that's not even elected board, they're just guys that volunteer, or women that volunteer. They could leave and say, we don't wanna do this, and then the school picks up and the place looks like, and as the fall goes on, once they're done in June, they're done, and things go grow, and especially that backfield under, you know, kind of like the post office there. People don't use that. Go ahead.
You know, and I developed a good working relationship with the Little League over the last year. You know, I came in and Vale Street was already in process and all that, and so some things would have been done better. But on Ash, on Ash Street, like anything else, it's town property. You know, I'm the director of facilities, I'm responsible for it. I'm responsible to Steve, and so it's gonna be able to take care of it. Last year, we tried to make this MOU work, and it was just a nightmare. You know, the only thing that says someone does trash before two, someone does trash after two, Parks and Rec will take care of it after 2:00. It doesn't list any level of care that anyone does, whether it just lists the departments. It's pretty void, and, you know, you need a lot of finger pointing on who's doing what. So we're going to this partnership with the Little League this year. I know the quality work they did at Vale Street, and they really wanna jump in on this and get it going. So I really think they're gonna do a good job for us. And this is the stopgap for this year, that we get going, that Parks and Rec solves, and comes facility, not Parks and Rec, but that portion of it.
So we'll take on the challenge as well, then, in working with these departments to make sure that we've got a written MOU to.
Say just something to write.
To cover all of those contingencies.
And I think that's a great thing to follow up and update the MOU with it, but we have to get going and make sure that it gets done. So I struck a deal with Little League, and we're gonna move forward with that, I think, and that is a betterment for all.
Just a couple of security updates, the high school cameras, so most of those are, pretty much are, pretty much all installed. There's a couple of change orders we might have.
Yeah, we, we got the cameras in the building, and we gotta do an extra piece of equipment so we can talk across the street. We have three cameras installed in the field house right now. So you can see from one side of the track all the way across over to the corner of the water treatment plant. And we got a field review at parking lot, we can get car descriptions and faces and plate numbers and stuff now. And then there was a couple blind spots over here, so we're adding two more cameras. And so I think another week, they'll be up, and we'll have a training session for all the people gonna be using the camera work, the camera or the software. It's already, we've already had some use of it already, important, a couple of strange cars and such. But that is working.
Do we already put signs, do we have to put signs up that say that it's monitored?
Yeah, we'll put, so that comes.
We're gonna get to the policy down there.
We've already, we're working on getting some of those signs made.
We should have just bought the signs, save some money. Just put the signs in.
Questions on cameras? So, I, first of all, I thank you, thank you both. I, you know, it was not that long ago when people were in your tenure, when we realized we were woefully inadequately supervised with cameras, and I just, the additions, I think, have been tremendous. So it sounds like there's really solid coverage at the elementary school and the high school, and plans for the middle school?
Yeah, I think we're still working on the middle school to try to figure out what would be a cost-effective solution to try to get some more coverage. So the next item on here were the Safer Schools and Community Technology Grants. So that was, there's a short turnaround on that grant, but it was basically some state money that was available. Clinton, if based on our, it was based on population of the community, we were able to apply for up to $60,000. So Russ worked mostly on that. We talked about what I wanna do, and Russ put some numbers together. Got some quotes, and we put in for the proximity card lock systems for all the buildings, and tried to upgrade our alarm systems to more like the home alarm system. So see how much of that we can get done on that, but we've been, we put in for that grant. I don't know if we'll get it or not, but it. The only thing I do know is it was a pretty short turnaround from the time they announced that grant until the time you had to get it in, which typically means not as many people apply, cause a lot of people who say they think they want to apply don't, don't get it in. And we, we were scrambling, but we meet the 4:00 deadline, so.
Okay, well, good luck with that.
And just, I don't know, Russ, if you have any other general facilities updates, or I think.
No, just, you know, well, this past year, we put a lot of money into the schools, especially spent a lot of money here, spent a lot of money in the middle school on heating and cooling systems. This was the first winter that we didn't have a shutdown in either of those plants. Until last week, when we did have one, and the boilers went out in the middle school for 20 minutes, but we're gonna get that fixed pretty quick. So that was pretty good progress. Usually, there's a couple shutdowns a month on the heating, so nothing, there's no major problems this summer, this winter. And we'll look forward to more of the same as we go forward. And middle school's been getting slowly improved in its appearance. We have one staff member over there painting, he's working on the hallways, and slowly it's getting accomplished. Three nights a week, he's painting, painting, painting.
I don't know what color that paint is, like, super ultra-bright white or something, but the one hallway that was on the, that was, it does make a big difference when you walk down there.
Right, you know, when you walk across the hall with a painter, when you walk in ones that are just not painted.
Striking contrast.
Striking contrast. And we, we have a meeting on, I think, on Friday with MAPS, uh, MAPS what, National Grid. New phase two of the lighting improvements, which will entail all of the remaining lights in the buildings to go to LED with automatic sensors for additional savings. So hopefully we can pull that off. And they're also gonna replace our motors in, heating pump motors in the cabin in the building. Put variable speed drives in the FRS for a shared savings program for more, more, any new savings for the district. Right now, we're about 110,000 a year in savings, which we fully realize in three more years, once the notes pay off. So in this, we'll have probably another 50,000, 60,000 a year.
Go ahead. So I, I apologize for not sending this out. I'm sending it to everyone. I committed to complete it. I had a walkthrough last Thursday and Friday. Yeah, and I'll send the whole thing out, but the three things that I would like to get done really soon, when we did this official walkthrough, is the wheelchair ramp on the bleachers. So, you know, the ramp kind of doubles back. There's two lips on that. So as you're going up, it's just like, what is it, you know, those slats, I guess, of aluminum, and it's not even. So someone's pushing a wheelchair up there, it's gonna, it's, one of those, I, it's a pretty good lip on it now.
Yeah, those were identified, when we had this, the whole bleacher was inspected about two months, about three months ago. But they're coming back in June, and then do the final.
I know, I had it written down, we found that in August, when we, August 8th, as a matter of fact. So there also, when I actually got a lap in on the track over there the other day, walking, not running.
Oh, good, thanks.
There's two, one on the, on either side where the grates are missing. I know one we found last year.
Yeah, you told me about that.
Just cause I know they got the track going, and obviously someone on that inside lap, all it takes is an ankle in there, and then. And the last one is complete, clean up the trash back there, but the, at the back end, almost, at the back end of the parking lot.
Right, we got most of it out of there. The vendors were supposed to come in. The vendors were supposed to come in this weekend and get it, they didn't show up. So I gotta call in to them, head them back, if I don't get them back tomorrow, we'll get someone else.
Yeah, cause I'd like to, I don't know, are they still coming this week or is it next week?
Next week.
Next week.
Pushed off to the vacation week, but yeah.
So if we get it done, just first impression, well, I know we get it, but it's been two months now, I keep hearing, I just like, just please get it gone.
Yeah, we'll take care of that.
Thank you.
The, and Casey and Karen, Dennis, Karen has gone around and been doing fence repair. So all of that's looking a lot better. And come fall, we will look at that for any other major kids we have to do. The fencing with the netting and all that, every care, it was replaced actually over behind the middle school, the baseball field. That's solid progress from last year's money.
That's great.
So that'll get done, should be starting.
Good news, long overdue. Anything else? Thank you.
Thanks, Russ. I've quite twenty budget, I don't plan on walking you through that again unless you need anything, but just a reminder, we do have the meeting with the finance committee and selectmen on April tenth at six thirty. I think they posted their meeting for six fifteen, but I think we're not scheduled to present till six thirty. Actually, I think Russ is gonna go first, but they wanted Russ to present on the same night so we could all be there to hear. Some preliminary finance committee input. So I did have a meeting with Mr. Tumalo and I know he basically said that what they were starting with was kind of planning on a four percent increase for the schools as they built their budget. Doesn't mean that's the final, there's a process to do the hearings and all that stuff, but as they were trying to, you know, start somewhere and put their pieces together, they were starting with a four percent for the schools. He also did mention that he would be in favor of warrant articles. Why does he like warrant articles? Because that can come out of one time money. So if he has money in free cash or any type of one time thing that might not necessarily be a recurring year after year expense, or year after year revenue source, excuse me, he could help give it to a warrant article, which is a one time expense. So he was initially submitted, you know, said that you'd be in favor of us submitting a warrant article if we had to cut down our budget to get to the, to the four percent.
Yeah, so right now, the budget you just said again, that was a.
Yeah. Yeah.
You don't, you would only have to have one if you had to take something out of that.
Yes, yes. So it wouldn't be adding, so it wouldn't be to like add anything else. It's like if we're cutting to get to four percent and we say, hey, we can add, can we move something to a warrant article?
Yeah, yeah.
So I just wanted to make you guys aware of that, cause I do know that, so some things are gonna happen pretty fast here because we're gonna have our meeting on the tenth. I think the deadline to submit warrant articles is on the seventeenth. So what we would probably do is the same sort of textbook technology article with the placeholder, if the finance committee still indicated that that's how they'd like us to proceed. And I think we could try to get that in, at least as a placeholder for the warrant. It's always better to have it there. I mean, it's easy to just, you know, for some reason we don't need it and it could be, you know, we just, it's not supported at the top meeting or whatever. But look at that. But I just wanted to make sure you were aware of that, cause I think those deadlines are gonna happen pretty fast. I wanna try to keep that in the budget, not put that in one article, because I think we want that to be.
So that's included in there, okay.
Yeah, that's in there. And we want that to be a recurrent, we do want that, we're saying that's gonna be recurring, cause we wanna do it year after year after year. So that's not one I would wanna move. But some of the things, like there was some money there for project lead the way robotics kits. Well, we don't need to buy those ones to expand that and then we don't need to buy them again. So that would be a good one to move over. So. The, so the next steps, you know, our goal, since, you know, we had that preliminary finance committee input, we've had some staffing, a lot of staffing meetings the last couple of weeks. And I know we've been sort of, Karen has sort of a running list of some things that we think we might be able to, to look at to try to get to that number. So our goal would be get our, get our feedback from the, we're gonna still present the same budget, cause I think it's important that we present, you know, what our, our needs are. And then we can, from there, we can see what their feedback is. Then we would do a revision of the budget to basically see, once we have, you know, now we have public feedback, we have, we'll have FinCon feedback. And then our goal would be to get another version of the budget to you in the April twenty second meeting. So that we could try to see, hopefully at that point, we're pretty close to matching things up.
So are we still, are the schools' facilities projects, is there still, is it still up in the air whether they're going to be presented as a school warrant article or as a facilities warrant article? Did I understand that conversation correctly earlier in the meeting?
Yeah, I don't think it's, I think the intent is for it to come from the facilities department, but then kind of be itemized in there. And I think that was part of kind of what we're trying to do anyway, where we're trying to move away from, you know, who can scream the loudest on town floor and we get it, so it's really more of a.
Prioritized.
A prioritized list, yeah.
Okay.
But I think what, what Mr. Bailey was basically saying was it's, we just, we wanna have enough specificity in that warrant article so that it is basically aligned to that prioritized list. So it's not just, you know, the town broke, gives, gives the facilities department a million dollars and next thing you know.
Right.
You know.
Right, the money's gonna be allocated, right, understood, yeah.
So that would be my, you know, the next step would be hopefully to revise the budget and get you something on the twenty second that we can hopefully approve and get close to, you know, what we wanna take to town floor or at that point maybe ironing out, you know, a couple, there might be a couple of questions that we have in terms of cuts we might need to make or not. We might ask you for some guidance and then, you know, budget up pretty soon.
Do we have to, do we have to move the one that you're presenting?
Uh, no, I don't think you need to formally approve it yet, cause I think we know it's gonna, it's gonna, it's probably gonna.
We can't do it the same night that we have the public hearing.
So we're presenting, it's like, we presented here, we got public input, we present there, we get FinCon input, then we'll be rolling out a budget and then ultimately we'll approve a version between now before town meeting that we're gonna bring to town meeting. Alright, so next thing I have is just a school choice vote. This is the time of year where the state starts asking you to vote if you're going to participate in school choice for next year. So we can just, we can, we can vote to just say, yes, we wanna participate and leave totally unrestricted. We can close certain grades. You can even put certain caps on there, if you wanted to put like the number of slots available on each grade. You know, right now, where we stand, you know, you saw those enrollment numbers. I think the only, the only grade I'd be concerned about accepting students in really is, is grade six right now. I don't know how the, how the committee feels, if, you know, possibly you don't wanna accept in grade six and seven or even. So this data was on pitch five and six, so. Yeah, I mean, even like grade one, as a hundred and fifty nine students fill with eight sections, that's still the only class size of twenty. And that's the maximum class size, except are some students who would be, like be in a substantially separate program, which would grow those.
We've never set any limits on maximum or minimum class size that you know of.
That I know of.
Right. And I would, I would prefer that we not get into that level of weeds.
But I think, you know, I think, I would be concerned if we were going to, I think if, if we got much bigger, I wouldn't wanna get much bigger than, than twenty five and grade six. I mean, I think that that's starting to.
So that one seventy seven is current enrollment?
That's a, that's projected for next year, yeah. And then, but I said that there are. We had the ten.
Choice out.
Ten charter school, yeah, ten, ten charter school students have been accepted to, yeah, so we got that preliminary notification.
Can I, can I ask a few questions?
Yeah.
For elementary school, what is our ideal class size? So like right now, it looks like we're hovering between twenty to twenty one, kind of across the board there with the class, the kindergarten piece and the pre-K piece. And then, before you answer that, I guess, how many of the surrounding communities don't have full time kindergarten yet? So with that in mind, I feel like we should consider taking your advice about the grade six in middle school. You know, I would imagine the ideal class size is twenty four.
Right.
So I would say, you know, to hear your feedback as far as, you know, the ideal class size for elementary school. I have concern about opening kindergarten because we're full time and other communities are not. So the drain that, you know, it's one thing if they're gonna come to our community, it's a great part of our community and, you know, we open those doors to them, but for that to come to us for kindergarten.
And leave.
And to leave because they don't have to worry about daycare or something else that's supplemented in other communities.
I think that's a great point.
You're concerned about.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's a great point.
I mean, I, I kinda see it in another light that, you know, we get somebody in in kindergarten from another community and even if they were coming to get the full time status, maybe they see things that they like and, and wanna stay.
We can probably get those numbers if you wanna see it, to look at it, you know. I think that if we make a motion to, to just participate and then, you know, at the discretion of the superintendent and the administrative team, I would be fine with that as well and then give them the leeway to, you know, to, to advise how they're, they're planning to do it. I would say with regard to enrollment numbers, I, I don't know that there's an ideal number of students. I mean, I have a sense of what's too large, I have a sense of what is on the small side. But, I mean, you know full well, it's the dynamics of a class can, and, and the, you know, the instructional team can make a lot of difference. So that, you know, that's why I, I'm glad that we're not sort of zeroing in on a number because if you can put, I'm with it in my other life, it can put you in a bind when you're, you know, when you're a number above or, you know, one student moves in and then all of a sudden you've gotta do something mid-year that I just wouldn't want to hamstring our administrative team by, by, by getting that rigid about not a number not to exceed, because that can happen mid-year.
I understand and I guess my reservation is, correct me if I'm wrong, school choice, we're saving about five thousand dollars?
Yeah.
So when we think about our per pupil expenditure of thirteen and we're receiving five thousand dollars, what I'm looking at is the impact of that five thousand we're receiving when we turn around potentially get a new teacher that could be sixty thousand or something.
Absolutely, and another, another great point. So I think that, you know, if we were to leave that decision to the administrative team to say, or if you wanted to quantify it where it's not to exceed to the point where another section has to be added, I, I, you know, I, I think that's responsible.
I, I, you know, I think I hear, you know, the reservation of not trying to micromanage as the committee. That's not something we've done in the last few years. We respect your ability to make that call and that decision. But what I'm saying is for the luxury of five thousand dollars, even though, you know, we're trying to, you know, get back on the map, trying to build ourselves, trying to show all the great things we do here in, you know, the elementary school, you know, and what's happening there are fantastic things, so it's about a point that they might come to that kindergarten and really enjoy it. But I'm just concerned about, you know, going over the threshold now. If we have a small kindergarten class, I'm not saying have that same, you know, holding back on that, it's just more of.
What I, what I make, maybe a recommendation here would be, so you're allowed to close grades later, right? So if all of a sudden we had a bunch of kids move in and we wanted to say, hey, we need to close grade five, we need to close grade five. If we wanted to, you could make a motion tonight to say, yes, we wanna participate in grade, in, in school choice for the nineteen, twenty school year. And we know at this point, we do not wanna accept any new students in grade six. I can get a little more information on kindergarten, cause I know some of this is projected numbers anyway. So when you look at the one forty and say it's exactly twenty, there's, there's some educated guess there based on what our hard number is right now and what we typically receive kind of walk in over the summer. So the, but we could, I could do a little more digging into kindergarten and we might be able to look at how we could phrase that so that we could maybe quantify the number of slots that are available.
You know, I, just say use grade six as an example. You have a kid in grade six or a couple of siblings automatically, this child already in the school system. Even if we close grade six, if that family had a sibling coming, they ought, they, we have to take them in now?
You mean like if two, if they both try to come in, you know?
Or one already in.
Usually if they're.
You're trying to, you don't think, I don't think that happens in like same games.
Yeah.
They get there first.
Normally, I mean, normally what happens is, you know, any kid that's still here, any kid that's a school choice kid now, they stay. I mean, we're not kicking them out.
Right.
But it would be if you were a new fifth grade student, I think the only exception, I don't know if it's an exception, yeah. I mean, that would be, we could look into that.
And then, I know high school, we do class schedules a little bit different.
Yeah.
But I was wondering if, you know, from the next meeting, we could get a breakdown of what the projected class sizes are nine through twelve.
Yep, yep.
You know, you can kind of guess, but I think from looking at previous numbers, there was a discrepancy with like the tenth grade, that's becoming a lot with graders and.
Yep.
So it's to be able to average what, averaging what the real numbers are.
Yep.
So I'll make a motion that we accept school choice other than grade six. And as far as the lower range or the other grades, just at the discretion of the superintendent, based on what the enrollments are looking like, if we need to close any other grades.
Motion being made and seconded, any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor? Thank you.
Alright, so thank you for that. We can make sure we notify the state that we are participating. I guess we could revisit that and we can modify as we need to if we want the other grades. And I'll, and I'll try to make sure we bring the, the K, school choice number, those types of numbers and some more information on high school class size for next meeting. Or hopefully the next meeting, you know, it's gonna come quickly with vacation, I don't know if it will more, but we'll get it. Alright. Just a couple of updates. Collecting high school principal search, so that posting closed on March fourteenth. Search committee met right away, they reviewed the applicants, I believe there was thirty one applications received. Process started with a, I thought there was, there was some good efforts made to be objective. There was, each candidate was, had to write a vision statement, that was in the posting. All of those vision statements were scored using a blind process so that, they use a rubric, but there was no names on, on any of them or any other identifiable things. So that was one component. Then it went into a screening of the credentials based on, so identified characteristics from the job posting. And then there was candidates selected to be interviewed. They conducted their interviews over a few nights and they recommended three candidates to me. Those three finalists will be meeting with me over the next three days, the ninth, tenth and eleventh. And actually they'll come for their interview with me and then we'll be bringing them up to the high school. We'll be doing a kind of a tour of the high school, meeting some of the staff at the high school, observing a class, debriefing a classroom observation and then having an opportunity for faculty to meet the, meet the candidates. This would just be the, the next step in the process. And then I think we would, we would go from there before we'd figure out if we're gonna do site visits or community forums before making a, a final decision.
So are we considering doing a public, like?
Yeah, I think, I didn't wanna do it yet, I haven't even, I haven't met these candidates yet, so I'm gonna start with this one. And then I think that before we would make a final decision, I think we would have something public, I guess. The cheerleaders nationals trip, I just tried to get you some more information. We had another meeting with the state, it gives you some more specifics on the dates, where they will be, where the competition is. I know there's still not exact times, they're kind of, they're still kind of, you know, booking all those things, it's only ten people, but I don't know if this is sufficient for you to just approve them for the, for the trip. We'll take care of the rest or if you want more details.
We have a motion to approve the high school cheerleaders trip to Virgin Beach.
So.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion being made and seconded, none discussion.
Yeah, so the whole, I turned, it's a round. It's a number of chaplains. We have the chapel, not, not that it's considered the number per student or.
Yeah, so we'll have, there'll be, there'll be nine athletes and two, two adults. So it'll be, you know, whatever, it's four and a half to one.
I was just gonna do it after.
Alright, thank you.
Other questions? Alright, there being none, all those in favor?
Thank you. Just an update on the district environment committee. We did send that language out, a survey out, we sent it out in three languages. So far we have a hundred and fifty one responses. I think we gave it until the end of this week for it to close, you know, we have something happening by the end of this week. So if I close it, you know, this weekend, it's a survey. And then we'll start, reconvene our committee to start looking at the data and see, you know, what, what we learned from that. I think that's all I have.
Thank you. Did the, the safety committee met on April third? Any updates?
We're just making a plan for drills for the end of the year. Making sure we're on top of our fire drills, talking about the security cameras. The grant, we talked about the grant and making sure, you know, we're gonna try to coordinate one more lockdown drill between now and the end of the year to, hoping to maybe incorporate some of the.
Alice.
Alice of some of the evacu- Uh, Alice, some of the evacuate, like, principles of.
I'm sorry, skipper of the curriculum committee, I know that they, I think they.
We didn't meet the two, in these two meetings, we met recently, but not since.
Anything new from the Marketing Committee?
Nothing other than we have a meeting scheduled for this Thursday at six thirty.
Okay. The Policy Subcommittee met, uh, and you have in your packets, um, uh, one, uh, policy that was already referenced, ECAF on security cameras in schools. Uh, this is sourced from MASC via Mass General Law. And these, and I guess we'll take them one at a time. The second policy, uh, was requested, uh, by Mr. DeWalt on disposition of surplus property. So, um, I'm assuming you've had an opportunity to look over the security cameras in schools, uh, policy we'd be looking for.
Just one, just one clarifying thing, that these, so both these policies came, uh, you know, kind of originated from the MASC. The Policy Subcommittee met, we looked at them, we made some changes, a few minor changes here or there based on kind of our, like, you know, our, particularly in disposition one, which is a little unique, 'cause we refer to the town guidelines. Uh, once we made our changes, those were sent to our legal counsel for, um, uh, just to make sure that they were still, you know, we didn't do anything substantial to, to change the, uh, the policy, and they were, uh, these are, represent the ones approved based on legal counsel.
So the one recommended by the, the disposition policy or recommend, uh, recommended by the MASC didn't have language in it that, uh, talked to following town procedures?
Correct, because it was written more from the prospect, the, uh, the standpoint of like a regional school, where they would have their own, um, they would have the authority to kind of dispose of that equipment on their own. So with us, um, we're actually gonna be governed by the town bylaws for that. So, uh, so basically, we just decided that, you know, the, the consensus was for us to get a policy that at least says, we're gonna declare things surplus that we're saying we can get rid of, and then we'll try to work some of the town procedures to, to get rid of it.
Gotcha, okay. So, um, we can take them individually, or we can just, uh, make a motion to approve, uh, policy ECAF and policy DN, unless you prefer to take them individually.
And to make a motion to, um, approve policy ECAF and policy DN for first reading?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion being made and seconded, any further discussion on either of the two policies? There being none, all those in favor, subcommittee, that's the first reading. Mayanos, thank you. Good work, thank you, subcommittees. Is there anything under old, there is under old business, the Facility Subcommittee appointments. I, uh, thank you, uh, I, as chairman, I hereby appoint, uh, Mr. DeWalt and Mr. McIntyre to the Facility Subcommittee. Godspeed, gentlemen. Anything under new business?
Steve, can we possibly at either the next meeting or even the meeting after that, get an update on the, um, where those, uh, negative balance, uh.
Yep.
Lunch accounts, 'cause it's been, I think, a couple of months since we've sent those letters out and everything, so.
Yep, so we have been meeting, uh, you know, we just had a meeting the other day with, uh, Food Service to go over it.
Okay.
And, uh, you know, it's tough, because we, you can track that the letters are effective in terms of getting money in, but there's still some other balances growing, so.
Sure.
But we should be able to have, I know we're gonna do a third quarter update at the next meeting anyway for our FY nineteen expenditures. So we should probably be able to incorporate that in, either in that meeting or the meeting after.
Okay.
Yep, but it was something, we are, we are still, still working on it. I actually had to do some other breakdowns of, uh, of, of those as well to kind of look at, you know, of this number that we keep talking about, how many of those kids, like, don't go to school here anymore? How many of those kids have since been identified as free lunch and all that kind of stuff? So we're kind of parceling that out too, to try to identify what's actually collectible debt and what's.
Just lost, right.
Yeah.
And when, we're getting that quarterly update on food service. I know we saw like a big picture, and I'm not saying for us to, you know, micromanaging what we have, but if we could look at, you know, where the deficits are coming up this year, because it seems like it's much larger than it's been in the past. Last year, there was a deficit, we raised the budget, that was a larger deficit, so.
We're doing, they actually are doing, okay, our projected deficit is, is much less than it was at the last one. That was what we went over in our last, in our last meeting. But yeah, we've got an update on that too, 'cause that's, we are trying to keep, uh, our eyes on that, make sure that we're making all the steps to try to get that all to, by the end of the year, try to get it all together.
And I think it's more, you know, a lot of restructuring's taken place in the food service industry as a whole, so it's major adjustments for everybody, and, you know, can we take a look at something to offset it?
Yep, and I think we have, I think there's a conference in May.
Yeah, I'm gonna go to today.
Food Service Conference in May, we're gonna, uh, send some people to. We also might even take a, uh, go visit another district to look at some alternative, um, breakfast ideas so that we could try to increase participation in that.
Thank you.
Mr. Bailey, I hereby appoint you to read Lunch and Food Service.
Yeah, the breakfast, the lunch.
Anything else under new business? All right, under Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one of Massachusetts General Law, Open Meeting Law, the committee will enter into executive session to discuss strategy and preparations for negotiations with only to be in my place and non-union personnel. The committee will not reconvene, requires a roll call.